Hi, good evening and welcome to this much bigger crowd than we usually see at a board of education meeting. Thank you all for coming to the Spencerport Board of Education meeting for Tuesday, June 6, 2023. Would you all try to join me in a pleasure to play?
United States of America, into the republic which stands one nation under God, individual liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. First order of business on the agenda is approval of the agenda. Can I get a motion Kate first and Megan second? All in favor, 7-0. With that, we're into our favorite part of any board meeting we have is when we get to recognize our students. But there are many accomplishments, so I will turn it over to you.
We want to welcome our student athletes who are here with us today. I'm going to invite Jen Logginsky into the podium. As Mr. Bracken said, it's always the best part of our meetings is having our kids' celebration, our student celebrations. So Jen, I'll let you lead us.
So I just have to say I'm very spoiled. I've gotten to come fall, winter, and spring this year. So that's a testament to the hard work of these student athletes and our coaches. So I'd like to thank you guys for inviting us back again to recognize the accomplishments of our spring athletes. Tonight, we're going to recognize our boys golf, boys tennis, and boys lacrosse teams. But in addition to the accomplishments of the student athletes here, I do also want to highlight that every single spring team this year received the Scholar-Athlete recognition from the state, which again is just a testament to not only the hard work of our athletes and our coaches, but also our larger learning community. So I just also want to highlight that as well. So I'm incredibly honored to share these accomplishments with you tonight and very proud of our student athletes and our coaches and how they represent what it means to be a Ranger. I would also like to highlight, we have one track athlete who qualified for the team on Friday. Kenny is headed there for shot put again. She was there in the winter for indoor track and she'll be headed back, but she was unable to be here tonight. So we just want to congratulate her on that incredible accomplishment. And to start, I'm going to bring up boys golf. Like to welcome Coach Buckner and our boys golf team. They were Monroe County co-divisional champions this year, and this was Coach Buckner's first year as our boys varsity head coach. And he is far too modest to include it in his speech, but he was Monroe County Division Four Coach of the Year. Highlight myself, so I wanted to share that with you, but I will hand it over to him.
I want to start by thanking Ford. Thank you administration for the support that you guys have shown, not just during the season, but throughout all seasons. You know, your continued support is so incredibly important to the success that I had with my athletes and all the athletes that are sitting here before you. So on behalf of all of us, I thank you very much. We were very fortunate to have a great season this year. Boys golf finished 12-2 in the regular season. Every single one of our starting six athletes qualified for postseason play this year. And we actually had one of our starting six make it as the alternate to the New York State team this year. So wildly successful team. With me are my two captains Joey Magnato and Robbie Laduka. Joey made first team all-county for the season. He's also the team Scholar-Athlete. Robbie also made first team all-county. He was most improved player for our team this year. Both of them had a phenomenal, phenomenal season, and I couldn't be more proud of them and the rest of the team and all the efforts that they made. So, you know, please join me in congratulating these guys. They're fantastic.
All right, next I'm going to invite up Coach Bizana and our boys tennis team. They finished as divisional champs this year as well. And one thing I will highlight about Coach Bizana, because again, a female notice, our coaches are very modest. We held the first ever tennis match under the lights this year. It was a very cool experience and that was 100% a result. Coach Bizana wanting to do something unique and exciting for our athletes, and I think we might have a nice tradition on our hands. So I just wanted to highlight that because she won't share that part about herself. So Coach Bizana.
We had a great season, division champs. We were 14-7 overall. We had five first-team all-counties. We had four second-team all-counties, one honorable mention. And the best part that I want to share about this team is it hasn't been just four years with them. For a lot of them, it's been since second grade that they've been in our tennis program. So I've had the privilege and honor of watching them grow from yay highs, young boys, to the young men that they've become. So thank you so much for that. Joey Cannavini, and they don't know this, this is hot off the press, first-team all-county. Where'd you go? Right there. Well done. Voted on at our coaches' meeting, one of our county coaches' meeting. Matt Lindsay, first-team all-county. Stephen Samuel, first-team all-county. Jackson Shaw, second-team all-county. Travis Bennett, first-team all-county. Joe Lurie, captain, Larry Johnson. Well done. So thank you very much, boys. And I love every second of the coaching.
All right, last but not least, we have our Spencerport boys lacrosse team, old tech Rangers. Coach Tarrell unfortunately could not be here with us tonight, so I will try to do his words justice. Guys, just keep explaining. Sean, maybe you go in the back. Okay, I'm going to try to do this justice. Again, if Coach Tarrell was here, I would say the same thing. He's an incredibly modest person. He was voted Division Two Coach of the Year, so just get the word out. I'd like to thank the board for honoring our boys lacrosse team. They were the Monroe County Division Two champs, and they became the first team in Spencerport history to make it to the sectional finals. Of the gentlemen up here, we had six all-team league players. Midfielder Cam Mesh, who was also Division Two Player of the Year, Jayden Rodriguez, John Cho, attackman Zek Tatura. And on defense, we had Sean Baird and Ashton McNair. We also had two players voted to the second team, Sam Scappo and Ty Hean. And he shared in here, because of the team's accomplishments, he was awarded the Division Two Coach of the Year. And he truly credits it all to the work of the kids. With all the winning on the field, this team wins as well, with as much winning as they do on the field, this team wins just as much off the field. They are young men of great character, and he is incredibly proud to coach them. Thank you to the board event and our district, the athletic department, and Spencerport High School for taking the time to honor us tonight. Thank you. Go Rangers. Cam, I think we'll just slide over and say a few words just again. Cam Mash, one of our captains.
Thank you to the board for what you guys do for supporting us. Thank you to the crew for supporting the cross team and all other sports programs that support. All my teammates, we had some great memories this year. Thank you for everything. It was a blast. And Coach Tarrell's not here, but I know myself and the team wouldn't be anywhere near where we did with none of the guys. I need the accomplishments we've had without him, so just thank you again. Yeah, thank you.
All right, and that concludes the teams and the coaches. I want to thank everyone for coming out tonight. I know it's not EG, but you are kind of to another field right now, but just thank you again for taking the time to recognize your accomplishments.
Thanks, Jen. Okay, we'll move on with our agenda for tonight and get into the business stuff. First order of business is privilege and floor. We do have one request for privilege and floor, Mr. Bardine. I don't think I need to read the normal process for orders of board.
Don't start my five minutes just yet, okay?
Okay, you want to get up there for?
Before I start my five minutes, I just want to say that, oh, just witness the athletes and things. That's one of my favorite parts of any board meeting is when we recognize our athletes. That was great. We got a great bunch of kids and it's super to be able to witness that and see that. You can start my five minutes now.
You got it.
My name is Donald Bardine, and I live at Sage Ridge Meadows Drive in Spencerport, New York. I'm here tonight just to respond to Mr. Bracken's response to me regarding some questions I asked in the past. So let me just read to you what I have here. It doesn't want to be very long. Mr. Bracken stated in his response to my January 24, 2023, because of those four questions, that he was not sure what you are hoping to discover with your line of questioning. My end goal is to identify and have removed from our school district policies and programs that do not align with the basic values of our community. Mr. Bracken also stated that he would answer any questions he had failed to answer. I asked a question concerning gender ideology and New York State funding at the April 25 board meeting that has not been answered. So that's an answer I'm still looking for. I have attached a copy of my April 25 questions as well as a copy of my response to Mr. Bracken's letter dated July 21, 2022, which I trust will further clarify my reasons for my questions and also my desire for better communications with Spencerport community. Concerning my questions of January 24, I have my response from the Board of Education, Mr. Bracken's letter dated June 4, 2023. The answer to my first question is no, excepting that, and maybe he'll appreciate this, but the rest he won't. Excepting the word "we" to refer to "you" as clarified for the board and appreciated as being by meeting by me. The answer to my second question is less obvious. I would ask for clarification from Mr. Bracken's statement. There is no curriculum targeted at gender identity after substituting presented with information for the word "taught" in my original question. Concerning communications with the Spencerport school district community, Mr. Bracken has stated that the current system is satisfactory. I won't go into detail. I'm going to simply state that I am not satisfied with the current system. There are other fundamental issues, some reasons Mr. Bracken's letters, and some outlined in my August 9, 2022 response, which I will be addressing at future meetings. And with that, I'm going to leave this entire packet for you, so you have to dig through your files to try to find everything. But this is basically what I'm discussing tonight. And Mr. Bracken, you mentioned that you had long years of service and many years. And you even mentioned when you were in school how things didn't seem, that things were seen basically the same now, which we've tolerated it. And I don't, I think there's some confusion here when I speak that I'm talking all the time about curriculum. Not necessarily involved in my mind in curriculum as much as, and I'll use your own terminology, culture. I'm concerned about the culture that we as a community are creating here in Spencerport in our school system, and that's what my concerns are. I think that based on everything I've, the last two years in communicating with the board, just this group here primarily, a couple of changes, but not a great deal. I think one of the biggest differences, we have some fundamental differences apparently. I'm trying to get to the root of that, and that's where, that's where I'm heading with all of it. So they'll have to bear with me, I guess. I am not satisfied with the amount of communications dialogue. We want to have any dialogue. I asked a question here and I get a letter back from Mr. Bracken in this case. And I've met with a couple of people, I met with Super Dennis Swan, I met with, if you'll pardon me, I'll say Ty instead of, I forgot your last name. And we can have dialogue, but I would like to see our community have that kind of dialogue and help you to find out where the community is at. Like I said, I think at the last board meeting, I don't know where the community stands, but I don't think you really do either. And I just, I want to find out whether you do or not, and so my intention is to find out. I'm already investigating other avenues to do that. Anyway, thank you for this time tonight, and I will leave this. Thanks so much.
Thank you. Okay, next order of business on our agenda is consent agenda. There was a, an addendum to the certificated part of our consent agenda. Could I have a motion to approve consent agenda?
I don't know with the addition of the certificated addendum.
Thank you. Second, Kate, thank you getting on the record there. All in favor, 7-0. All right, thank you. All right, next order of business is Board of Education reports. Before we jump into this though, Mrs. I am sorry to say that our long-serving board member, Ms. Kate Sarnicki, is no longer going to be part of the, part of the team here in the realm of the board, but you are a definite. You are always going to be part of Spencerport team. Kate, it's been both fun and enjoyable having you on the board, listening to types of things that you've brought up, the questions that you raise, and your input to our discussions. So I personally, and on behalf of the rest of the board, I want to thank you for your service for not only to the board, but to the district and to our community. We'll hope to have our appreciation. Thank you, thank you. The only two things I had real quick is I just want to mention new member training and our newest board member, Martha. Thank you. I will be attending new member training this Saturday, Monroe County School Board Association. I'm on one of the panels there, so don't ask hard questions, okay? Second thing, I was, I probably saw the email. It said Ranger Olympics, Jen. That was amazing. It really was. It was just a great tribute and having the other two school districts there was really kind of neat to have that interaction, have the, more than just our own athletes out there participating. So it was really a great day, and Jen, please, I hope you did pass on to your PE team and everybody else that was there. What a great job they did.
A lot going on campus, springtime, there's lots of athletic events, plays, musicals, the jazz ensemble did some stuff. There's just so much going on, so much positivity on campus. The weather's nice. Just, it's a good break from the monotony of the winter, and it's just refreshing.
There has been so much going on that it's hard to highlight any of it. I do though, Jen, I just, I know that your coach has left already, but I do want to say this, that teams that do well are sometimes made up of coaches who are also doing well. And I'll just speak of Coach Bizana for a minute because she isn't here, but I will speak to her. Is that when you have, when you're able to say, I've worked with these kids since they were in second grade, that tells you something about the type of leader that you are, that people want to continue to come back to work with you. And in this fall, she coaches girls tennis, and the girls' float went by the homecoming parade. And on the side of their float was a large sign, and that sign said, "We love you, Coach." Now, for high school girls, put a sign on a float saying, "We love you, Coach," says something. So that says something about, not about the winning on the field or on the court, but how you develop a team. And, you know, I used to say to my kids too, like, teams aren't made over pizza. It's made over when the worst player on the team, you know, is having a bad day that day, the worst player that day. And the best player on the team comes over and says, "Hey, man, I'm a sweater." And some of these coaches are exactly those types of people who are saying the same things to those kids on the field as they were when they were teaching in the classroom. So I just want to point that out, that our students are remarkable athletes, but some of our coaches are remarkable people.
Thanks.
We have an eighth grade, well, my kid's last band concert because she's a quitter. But we had the middle school band concert, and it was lovely. It really was. Those, those band teachers are incredible, and really the growth that they saw was, was amazing. And then the kiddos leaving for Boston tomorrow for their eighth grade trip. We're so excited that's back, and I'm Godspeed to everyone. And, and moving up on Monday, which is crazy. But I'll take this time to say thank you to everybody who currently serves on the board. I have absolutely loved serving, serving with you and the people that I've served in the past. Everyone that I've served with has been incredible and miss alley. And I will, I, you know, it's tough. It's tough. I am, I am not too self-centered to things. No one else can do this job, but I will miss everybody here and, and everything that I've learned. We've gone through some extraordinary ups and downs. I know that everybody thinks they have it, the worst when they're going through it. But some of the stuff that we've gone through has been incredibly uplifting and then some really tough times. Thank you so much to the administration. You guys are truly incredible. We're so fortunate to have you. I know you will miss my heckling, but I have counted it a blessing to serve in Spencerport. I'm a better person for it. Our kids are extraordinarily blessed to be in the community, so thank you. And you guys are, we fine without me. But thank you. I really enjoyed my time.
I gotta follow that. Yeah, just, just.
No, just real quick, high school band concert, Joe Pennebealy and Ben Osborne had a high school concert. So kudos to them. And one nice thing they did was they honored their seniors. Joe and Ben had a little something for them, so it was nice to do that.
Thanks. Anything else?
So you're right, there is a lot going on on campus. And something today that we dealt with the first time was managing air quality. So it seems like if you're looking at our forecast, that we may continue to struggle with smoke for the next two days. So we've already shared with our bourbon just as a board knows too, near what we did today. We're going to try and limit outside activity during the day. Our principals at the elementaries did a great job because young kids don't understand why they can't go out and play recess and what's going on. But we'll watch the air quality for the next two days pretty closely and be responsive to that. So tonight, we have a wonderful presentation for you, and that is with our student athletic leadership team. So I'm going to ask Jen to come to the podium as well as her student athletic team members. And they're going to present their work as a leadership team, the goals that they have this year, and what they hope to accomplish in the future.
Hello, yeah. So I'm going to introduce two super incredible student athletes, Ellen and LaCution. She plays basketball and runs track for us. And Robbie Laduka plays soccer and is on our ball team. And I'm going to brag a little bit about Robbie. He also represents Spencerport at the section five level on the section five student athletic leadership team. So he has kind of a hand that's much bigger than Spencerport, so that's pretty cool too. So we're going to just kind of share the student athletic leadership team, what it's about, how it formed, and kind of some of the work that we've done thus far, and then what our plans are going forward. So we started in 2019, pre-COVID, as many of us now refer to it. So we started really just meeting monthly to kind of just build a camaraderie amongst the team because it hadn't existed until then. And ultimately, we got working on a mission. So really, it's to foster a positive and inclusive school-wide community through meaningful athletic leadership. So really, being a leader on and off the field and impacting the whole school community, not just our athletic programs.
Forgot about the animation, sorry. So our student athletic leadership team consists of many different people from many different teams. It can be captains or just regular players, no matter what age. This year, we, for the first time, we did like, we call it reading Rangers. So a group of us went to all the elementary schools in Spencerport, and we told them what books, what sports we played, read them books. And then at the end of our book, they would ask us any questions they wanted to, prefer about our sport, but they asked us what our favorite color was and what class we had together, anything. We have monthly meetings where we talk about pretty much everything, I would say, talk about a lot of different things, including sports. We talked about leading up to the Special Olympics. In the Special Olympics, I unfortunately wasn't able to go this year, but last year is kind of the same environment. A bunch of us loved racing with elementary kids as well as our special kids as well, and like running with them and everything was really fun to do. Not only did it be like missing school, but it was also cool. And then we had a workshop at Pure Imagination Cafe in Gates. That, there we talked about updating our student, sort of athlete handbook. It was like a workshop we did, and this was a coach, because they had sent by. And we probably have, pretty much have a good handbook right now, but updated a couple of things, and yeah. London's really good about keeping us in check with what we need to update.
Yeah, so again, that was kind of the, what happened this year and kind of what our goals were for this year. And I'm going to let Robbie take care of her. Because he has been here since the beginning of school from his freshman year, so that's pretty exciting.
Yeah, my first introduction to it was watching my brother on Zooms during the spring of 2019, and meeting with her and kind of setting up what this was going to be. It was pretty cool coming to something that my brother had helped set up. So 2019, 2020, we were just working on figuring out what we were going to be doing and how it's going to impact the school. One of our first major ideas was the Ranger radio podcast, which I think is very, I've never heard of any other school doing that. So I think it's pretty cool that we could send out the voices of our students to everybody at home, and they could listen in and see what's been going on. 2021, 2022, we were doing, we were going into classes and just basically talking to kids who weren't, or in the middle schools, who were not involved in sports yet, and just kind of showing them how awesome it is and the best parts of being on the teams. And last year, we worked on this thing, the Atomic Habits book study. This book helped me out a lot because I needed a book to do a project on, and my parents can attest to not a big reader. So it was good having this book there because everything in it was so informational. It really helped me personally as an athlete, and even just a human being looking to improve himself. And over the course of a few months, we read the book, we come together and discuss what we had learned in the chapters, how it could make us improve. And that was a really good little thing for us to do. They got me a 99 and, yeah, like.
We love a good double dip, Rob. I'll let London touch a little bit too on the Ranger radio podcast. She was a really integral voice in that. She was in all episodes, I believe. And you are all of them. So I'll let her kind of highlight that a little bit too.
So that was the year of COVID. We had the Zoom calls, of course, so we kind of wanted to meet in her office. We can do that. So it was me and this senior who graduated a couple of years ago, Sophia Fono. We had a podcast with Pinsky as well as Erica Jones. She is the.
Chief Diversity Officer.
Chief Diversity Officer, which is a very good business, I guess. She never lets no executive business in, so we're assuming something big. But she talked about equity and equality among school and sports. There's a lot of, I'm also in Equity Committee here at Spencerport. So we saw the pictures of three different students or people lined up on the platters thing, seeing who has more, who's more in favor of getting equal rights they wanted. letters thing, seeing who has more, who's more in favor of getting equal rights they wanted. So we talked about that. I kind of just, I was young at the time, so I didn't want to overstep. But I kind of just sat there and listened to things we can do to just make Spencerport more equitable for sports as well as just students as well as in the environment. And Sophia just took it away. I kind of wanted to listen in and see what is going on.
You're doing great. Alright, um, so again, just to kind of highlight some other things that we did this year. Um, one of the, the big things that we really tried to focus on is social media. I think it's a very present, um, reality in our lives. And I, I think I'm very fortunate to have such incredible young student athletes that are willing to have uncomfortable and maybe difficult conversations about the realities of social media. Um, so Ms. Seifer came in and actually did a presentation to our student athletes, um, just about branding and messaging and how to always represent yourself in a, in a positive light. You're always representing your community once you put that, you know, that Ranger shirt on. So, um, that was something new that we added this year and I really appreciated her willingness to collaborate with us. Um, reading Rangers, as we talked about, I think the kids really enjoyed that this year. Um, I know the elementary schools did too. Um, and it's just a great way to expose, you know, our student athletes to our future student athletes. Um, and then as, you know, London and Robbie shared, the workshop we did this year was really great. Cause again, they're really good about keeping me in check. So having a chance to really sit down and do a deep dive into our, uh, student athlete handbook, really with the focus on sportsmanship. Um, was really kind of the focus of the workshop that we did this year. And it was great to see them in a different setting outside of, you know, meeting in the PAC every month. So. Uh, looking ahead, so some things that we're hoping for next year. Um, we're hoping to expand the concept of reading Rangers and take it into the phys ed classrooms so that they're able to participate in the sports that they play in with students in the, at, uh, of the elementary phys ed level. Um, we're going to continue to review our practices in our handbook every year. And, oh, we have a couple of professional developments coming up that I'm hoping that, um, these student athletes will, uh, join in and just working with our coaches, um, because there's always ways to improve and ways to get better. And, um, there's nobody's better to teach us than the kids themselves. So. And I'll let Robbie do the last slide because I know you're really excited about it.
Oh, yeah. Okay. So, um, we, uh, we love a good motto. So the athletic department next year is going to be locked in all year. Um, I, I love it. I, I think it's a good. I, I run the Zoo Crew page, um, and whenever anyone would send me their games and, uh, tell me to put it out and get everyone, um, involved and go into, to watch the games, they were like, make sure the Zoo Crew's locked in, make sure the Zoo Crew's locked in. So, um, I don't know, I think our fans are locked in. I think our, our athletes are locked in and that's, that's just what we're going to be. So, lock it.
It's probably a great way to end. I will just add, so these two, uh, incredible student athletes will also be my co-EMCs at the athletic ceremony this year. Um, so this will be Robbie's third year in a row doing it. Um, hopefully get next year off so that he can enjoy being a member of the ceremony. But, um, he's been co-presenting with me for the last two, uh, two years now, three years. And London's going to be joining us this year as well. So I just am very thankful that we have such incredible student athletes that, um, humor me when I come to them with all these crazy ideas. Thank you very much for taking the time to hear what we've been doing at Salt and I just really appreciate the time.
Thank you, Jen. Thank you to the student athletes as well. We're going to transition now into our summer programming. So part of our planning, uh, for the use of our federal stimulus funding has really been to support the academic recovery, particularly, um, for students who may have struggled or regressed over the COVID closure of schools. So we wanted to share an update with the Board of Education and the community in regards to what we plan this summer, uh, for our summer programming. So Ty, I'm going to invite you and your team to present.
Thanks, Ms. Swan. Uh, just let me make this transition. I also just want to, uh, acknowledge the Salt team, uh, our student athlete leadership team, uh, for all the work that they've done across our district. And, uh, they were kind enough to provide our Board of Education shirts with the new logo on it as well. Uh, so like Ms. Swan just mentioned, um, part of the federal stimulus funds allows us to provide some additional support and assistance to our students through, of course, the summer. Our, our summer programs are somewhat in existence, uh, for quite some time. And there's some that are new that we're really excited about. Uh, overall, we have the potential to reach, um, over four hundred students, uh, throughout the month of July and August. We're really excited about the work that lies ahead. Uh, so once again, we have continued to have our jump and leave programs. Uh, those programs are housed in each one of our elementary schools. And they're really geared for incoming kindergarten students and then our KGO1 students. And how those individuals are selected, um, as we go through the screening process, uh, for kindergarten. Uh, our teachers do an phenomenal job kind of working with our students, kind of providing them some really simple assessments, uh, whether it's letters, numbers, et cetera, and then make a determination on which individuals, plus are eligible for our jump program. The same lines, um, those students are currently in kindergarten, uh, may require some additional assistance and some support. Uh, that we want to ensure that we sustain their education, uh, across the month, summer months. We also identify those students as well. So we have room for about eighteen students per building, per section, so fourteen for jump and eighteen for leave. And those programs run for four weeks, um, and we provide transportation for all the students involved. Our two-five summer academy, uh, will be housed at Burnaby this year. These are for current first through fourth grade students. Um, we identified approximately ten students per grade level, per student, per school, sorry. Um, you may recall last summer when we provided the Board of Education update, uh, we had some numbers that required some lifting, so to speak. So we started to work with our buildings in January to identify students. And we really were looking for a commitment from our families, um, before we then started to reach out to additional families to see if they were interested in the program. I will share with you, although transportation is provided for all of our elementary schools, one of the challenges that we face is that families say we need a wraparound program. So what is available in the afternoon or what is available on Fridays, knowing that our programs run Monday through Thursday, like traditionally in the morning. Um, there's a, the two-five, um, program along with our L program will run an additional week. So those go until August tenth. And then, uh, for this though, uh, the focus, we start first with our, our reading mat. Then we do SCL work. And then we also kind of help our students, uh, bridge any gaps that they may experience, um, across the board. In terms of our L program, once again, that runs from July tenth to August tenth. Um, so that's five weeks, um, time Monday through Thursday. And really what we're working on is just sustaining our students' their, um, exposure to the English language. Uh, providing them contacts, providing them additional assistance, providing them support. Um, and it's really a, a popular program. Uh, there was a time when Spencerport used to, uh, partner with other school districts for our program, but because our numbers are so large, we now have that ability to kind of run our own program in-house. One of the pieces that we're really excited about, uh, involves our program at Cause Growth. Uh, this will, we piloted a program last year. We're going to expand it, uh, this upcoming summer. Uh, this is for our students currently in fifth through seventh grade. Um, and really you'll see here, just in terms of the time, once again, it's four weeks, uh, Monday through Thursday. And there's a different focus in terms of SCL combined with STEM experiences. You'll see here just kind of a, a schedule of what this looks like, we're really trying to make it more of an exploration, providing students authentic learning experiences. Uh, so it's not just them sitting there for three hours of time listening, but really kind of interacting with items that, um, impact science, technology and mathematics. Last but not least, uh, is our high school program. So this is our current eighth and ninth grader. So we're really targeting next year's ninth and tenth graders, um, really trying to work on not only SCL, but also credit recovery. Or providing students the ability to earn credit. So I think those last two pieces are really, really important, knowing that some of the students that we're working on, we're either trying to get them ahead if they're an incoming freshman. We're trying to get them caught up, they're currently a student at the high school. Um, here you can see just the different work that, uh, the high school is proposing with three different rotations. Um, also including the, uh, time for SCL, really connecting and fostering that rapport with students. I would share with you just, uh, some of our challenges that we face, you know, finalizing those rosters. So getting a commitment from families. Um, especially I think some of the challenges we've found is at the secondary level. Um, some students are, uh, maybe disenfranchised with, uh, with school, trying to kind of entice them to remain, um, in the building and connect in some capacity. I think securing staff, just really, you know, we know how hard all of our teachers are working, uh, throughout the course of the school year. And then just to ask them that as well. And I think that's kind of why we have that Monday through Thursday, tip for approach the half day. Uh, just to kind of provide them that reprieve to transportation. Right now, we're just in the throes of, uh, working with, uh, our transportation director, Julie Chernetsky, uh, to ensure that, um, all of our bus runs are solidified. Uh, I think that's something that we've experienced in the past where we provide the rosters coming in the eleventh hour. And then, you know, we, we expect transportation to give a, you know, miracle, uh, overnight. And so we're trying to provide transportation, those names, uh, ahead of time. And Julie's just been fantastic in terms of, uh, accommodating those needs. And right now we're just coming in the process of, uh, solidifying our curriculum, especially for the middle school and high school program. Since they're brand new and they're infancy stage, I'm trying to give teachers time, just kind of develop a system and develop a program to really support our students. Without turn over to the board, does anybody question?
Ty, you mentioned that, that some of these parents are indicating, you know, the idea of a wrapped around program for some of these things. So, and I guess I would probably even extend in middle school, depending on the families. Is there, is there, as we start to kind of continue to mature ourselves, is there a way to for us to work with, you know, some local daycare? Or, or find a way to bring that kind of capability into the building for that, that fifth day and the day after noon?
Yeah. So we started to, uh, explore opportunities and options. There, there, there's programs that would come in and provide support, wraparound. Um, they would bill chart families' costs. We're trying to ensure that we don't add additional burden to our families. Uh, but I think based on the feedback that we received, you know, we need to really do a needs assessment to see, you know, is our Monday through Thursday have to have a program really precluding families from participating in it. So what can we do to ameliorate that?
Okay. Um, the credit recovery thing, especially with the kids going into high school and stuff. How are we, are we getting caught up? And this is more of a general question than just to the summer programs. But are, how are we doing with kids that are now, that maybe were really impacted over the past three years? Are things starting to get back kind of the normal level of credit recovery needs or we still have a big, big problem?
Uh, they're starting to normalize. I, I think, um, some of the programs that the high schools develop such as the academic workshop, uh, which really run during that second and third quarters, where students are coming to school, sorry, participating in the program after school. That's part of our credit recovery program where we're allowed to them, uh, provide them, if they've received a fifty perhaps during the first quarter. If they participate in this program, they can then move that, that grade up to sixty-five. So it's passing through that, puts them on a rate track, uh, to be, uh, successful by the end of this school year. Uh, but I would say overall it's normalizing, but there's still obviously students that we need to be, uh, mindful of and, uh, really ensure that they don't fall through the gap. Tracks rather. Um, I think another piece too, and one of the charms that we have the high school program so that if a student qualifies for regional summer school, that's still an option as well. So we have students, we have hundreds of students that also attend regional summer school.
And this is going to sound like a dumb question, but are we limiting ourselves in any way because of cost constraints? I, I mean, is there something that we could just, that we need to look at how can we bump it a little bit more and make it even more accessible or?
I don't think so. No, I think Rick has been very creative and very supportive. So he's just looking at me right now. So, um, I, I think that if you were to do something of that wraparound care, that's probably something that we would want to develop in-house. And so there could be an additional cost with that, if we wanted to assume that financial burden.
Okay. A lot of school districts are finding the same thing, that we're trying to create the programs, but because of family constraints, vacations. Students who are struggling to engage, you know, it's difficult to get the students that we want to engage to engage. And, and, you know, but we continue to try and continue to outreach to them.
I have a question. Is this service separate from an extended school year service? Right. This kind of thing. And having staff difficult at all levels, difficult at secondary and not elementary or?
Say cross the board.
Cross the board.
And we talked to the, to, where is it? Yeah, just generally, I thought we'd be teaching, so I'm going to be talking to them about what is our solution that we can come to some term one to entice people to do this and make it more attractive. Besides just some dollars added.
Yeah, I think that our, our principals have done an amazing job, uh, with recruitment of, you know, once we went through that first iteration of the job posting and seeing, um, the, the number of individuals that applied. I think our principals did a really nice job. I think that's certainly worth noting that we should engage in that conversation yesterday to see what we can do differently.
I just want to share, um, uh, probably something that I'm going to say that kind of goes without saying how, um, especially since COVID, how important this program is. I have a child, Air Canavio, who, who has done summer academy since COVID. And it has been invaluable. I honestly don't know what we would have done without it. If, you know, if anybody ever comes to me and says, you know, it can be very, it can feel very personal when you have a kid that needs some extra help and, you know, to go to summer academy, but it combats the regression so much. And, um, Mrs. Lemke specifically, and I know all of our principals are fantastic. But, you know, she makes a point to talk to the kids and reassure them and let them know that this is, this is something that isn't to make them feel bad. It's something that's going to help them. It's something that's going to make the school, the next school year, um, easier. And when my first went to summer academy, she was very upset. And now she's just like, well, that's just part of my learning experience and it's what's best for me. And you can hear it coming out of her mouth that it's these incredible teachers and administrators in her life that are building her up that way. So I hope we can foster and cultivate that. I'm sure that you will tie with everyone. And I know, uh, we ask so much during the school year, so asking teachers to go back in the classroom. But everyone that we as a family personally have come into contact with. And, um, as a board member, everyone that I've come into contact with, you are recruiting the right people when you do get them because they are still so engaged and so energetic and you just expect them to be kind of at their wits end. And we've had nothing but a fantastic experience and it will make our child specifically a better learner overall. And I know almost all of those kids are in, are having that experience. Um, so I'm super, super grateful for the program. I know it cannot be easy. Um, but, you know, more as a parent probably than a board member in this instance, I, you know, your work does not go unnoticed and it's so, so vital. And I really, really do appreciate it. I hope everybody can get that experience out of that.
Any other questions?
Thank you. Thank you so much.
Next, I'm going to ask Dr. Case and Susan Hopp to come to the podium. We're going to transition into professional learning. So this is an opportunity for the board to hear, um, how we are continuing to provide professional development to our staff and faculty. And, um, what that professional development plan is going to look like in, for the years to come.
Wonderful. So good evening. It's nice to be here tonight. We are talking about our favorite thing, whatever our favorite things, professional learning. Um, so we, in the spirit of celebration, you know, we're going to spend a little bit of time looking at, you know, just briefly the components, you know, that nicely requires for the plan. Um, but then we're also going to just highlight, you know, really, we hope it comes through in the pictures, comes to life, you know, how we got to spend a lot of time with the adults, uh, here in Spencerport this year around their growth and around their goals and around how they can be more present and engaged for our students. So, um, these are just the general components, right? We have a regulation that we have to comply by. And then we, at Spencerport, you know, really want to think about, we want to ensure that our plan aligns with the district priorities and goals. And, you know, it's first and foremost connected to staff needs, um, as well as kind of that marriage between the staff needs and the areas that they identify. And then what our district is focused on. So these are some of the elements that we include. We, uh, did survey our staff and we got a decent response rate of about eighty staff in terms of what they're looking for uh, for, for professional learning. And some of the highlights that they stated were that they wanted more, uh, SCL and CRE work. They wanted to go deeper in a lot of the learning that they've done this year around the science of reading and literacy expectations. As well as assessment practices, uh, next generation standards and the co-teaching model as well, were some of the things that came out from the staff survey.
Uh, and in terms of, as, as Dr. Case was saying, some of the expectations from New York.
And in terms of, as Dr. Case was saying, some of the expectations from New York State, C T L E or the Continuing Teacher and Leader Education component, we, that is one piece of our plan that we have to apply to become a sponsor through New York State. So everything that we provide our staff relative to C T L E endorsement has to have a component of content, pedagogy, or language acquisition to it. And so this is just one of the pieces of the plan and like Dr. K said, with some of the content that our staff were highlighting, those would all be pieces that would fall under this plan. So when we submit the plan to the board and then ultimately to the, to the state, we would be recognized as a sponsored C T L E endorsed sponsor, and then all of our professional development would be able to provide for our professional certified staff opportunities for them to build their one hundred hours over their five years. We also just wanted to highlight in terms of the three areas of the strategic plan that we were really trying to be very thoughtful in terms of our strategic alignment to the professional, professional learning opportunities that we offer. So in terms of student experiences, hopefully you will see this evening through some of those pictures, opportunities where our students were able to work as teachers and teach one another, where our teachers were, were sharing learning with one another and where our teachers, of course, were sharing with our students. In terms of our academic excellence, we also really wanted to highlight some of the pieces around some of our standards work this year, computer science and digital fluency and social emotional learning components. And then finally, with our connected and collaborative environment, hopefully you will sense the essence of partnership, that we have lots of opportunities within our district and outside of our district to build partnerships. And we've been very intentional around those partnerships, for sure. This particular slide is just highlighting in terms of the way it was grouped, that first group are really the audience of our professional learning that Dr. Case and I focused on this year with our colleagues in the Office of Instruction. So we tried to provide opportunities for leadership, for our administrators, for our teacher leaders, our student leaders, and again, student to student workshops. The, the middle chunk of terms there are really highlighting the different venues that we took advantage of. We tried to be really thoughtful in terms of our day. As you know, some issues are not, you know, that's not a new thing. And so we really wanted to be mindful around how do we work within the constraints of our current system and maximize the time that we had. So with our faculty meetings, with the department meetings, during our data days, we really tried to maximize those opportunities so that our teachers and our students didn't, they didn't have to sacrifice that professional learning time just because we were dealing with some other things that were in many ways out of our control. And then again, the, the third slice of information there is really highlighting the partnerships that we have. These, again, were just a couple of examples. Our partners with the Regional Equity Network, University of Rochester's Warner School of Education, the Memorial Art Gallery, Bosie's two, and of course Bosie's one and Bosie's four, and our junior achievement.
So now we hope that you'll see this come to life a little bit. So for our staff meetings this year, the ones that, you know, we worked on in the instruction office, our goal was really to model engagement, you know, so we, we ask our students to be engaged during our lessons. And we want our staff to feel engaged and feel connected to the learning experiences. So we explicitly paired a lot of our equitable strategies and tenants with the castle wheel of social emotional learning. And we showed them, you know, and we did a lot of, I think, you know, culture building and, you know, connectedness with our staff around, how are you guys feeling this year? You know, we are post-COVID, we're still in a heightened emotional state with students and staff. And I think that, you know, we wanted to model those instructional strategies, but also say to our staff, like, we're here for you and we're listening. And so that was, I think, helpful. You guys can see kind of the different ways in which they had dialogues. We tried to model different groupings that they could actually turnkey and then use in the classroom as well. And so with the U of R, so we had a strong partnership with U of R specifically relative to our C F C and our instructional coaches. And so last year, U of R spent a lot of time working with our coaches on the coaching cycle. And this year, our coaches and instruction leader said to us, we're ready for the next level. You know, so Mrs. Scott and I really partnered around, okay, what are our instructional priorities? You know, we talked about student engagement, we talked about cognitive innovation. And so we streamlined that messaging from the U of R and from the instruction office and then helped to support that with our coaches around how it would look in different grade levels and different disciplines. And so that was a real, that's been a really exciting opportunity to partner that way.
Sure. And the, the University of Rochester, the leadership training. So again, that was partly with our C F Cs at the secondary level. So the pictures that are represented here, there's a lot of science at high school level. One of the pictures there is actually in a science classroom where the teachers are, we had some of our middle school teachers going to the high school. And one of the University of Rochester's colleagues actually modeled the lesson while the teachers were able to stand back and just observe. And not interact with the students, but really just take it in. And then there was a debriefing session afterwards. So it was this, this process of let's talk about what we're going to see in terms of instruction, then let's see this executed and, and then, and then we'll have a conversation about what really happened and how that might impact our teaching. The other picture that's there with the long table with, with folks around it are our K five, our TOSSAs and our M T S S coaches, so our C F Cs at the elementary level, as well as our K five elementary principals and Ty and myself. And we really wanted to spend some time this year digging into our math expectations as a district and identifying something similar to our E L A expectations around what it is that we really want to see in terms of our math program, a really robust math program at the K five and ultimately K twelve level. And so we worked with another partner through the University of Rochester, Mary Ann Maves, really unpacking a lot of that philosophy, those core beliefs, those, those deeper understandings around what we believe for instruction for our students. And then we were able to come up with a guidance document that we'll be sharing in our P L week at the end of June. Show you in just a minute. So another highlight to the U of R coaching cycles and the demonstration classrooms. So the M T S S coaches and the TOSSAs were incredibly excited about their opportunity to work closely with Mary Ann. They brought Mary Ann in to do some work with our team leaders. And then another opportunity we, we wanted to take advantage of were looking at our teachers as the team leaders who had had some of their professional learning, where they could bring it back and turnkey it in their classroom and share some of their learning with their colleagues. And so what you're seeing here are pictures of some of those team leaders presenting some of the number talks with their students, while some of the teachers that are not necessarily team leaders, they were able to come in and observe. Our M T S S coaches, our TOSSAs, they covered those classes so that our, our teachers didn't have to worry about stepping out of the classroom and instruction wasn't interrupted. So our students still had what they needed and the teachers were able to go in for about twenty, thirty minutes or so to observe these number talks. And then they debriefed, the teachers that were observing debriefed with Mary Ann and myself. So it was an opportunity for us to just have that embedded job, embedded professional learning right there and with really no disruption to the day. And what was really exciting is so our newer teachers were a part of some of these walks and they just thought it was so great that they were selected to come in and do some of these observing and then have these collegial conversations midday. So it was, it was a bright spot. This right here is another example of how we're really trying to just provide professional learning opportunities. So Ty, Cory and I have had an opportunity this past spring with several of you that are sitting around the table here tonight to talk about grading and assessments at the district, at the, at the secondary level, the six, twelve level. And so one of the things that we wanted to highlight in this particular presentation was that while we were a committee that was looking to, to come to some recommendations, to provide to the superintendent's board, there was also some learning components to that as well. And so whenever we're coming together in our committees, we, we're always trying to be mindful of where can we provide the learning opportunities for the folks at the table. And then these next two pieces are with our students, particularly our STEM Day in the early fall. We had students at the secondary level who were taught certain lessons that they then turnkeyed to our elementary students in each of the buildings. So we just wanted to provide a highlight here how our, our young teachers became the, or I'm sorry, our older students became the teachers. And then in this next page or this next slide.
Yes. So this is the student to student partnerships. We forged a unique partnership with our friends across on the east side, East High School. And we were able to, you know, do something that I think was really powerful for, for all of the students relative to affirming identities and understanding student voice. And we're looking at, you know, welcoming and affirming both at East and at Spencerport. And so part of that work was, we partnered with Bosie's. So we did some identity projects, looking at books and what would your book cover be? And then we really looked at, you know, growing that momentum for community circles. So we, we just had the students interacting and sharing experiences and learning really from one another through other team building, you know, as well. And then it culminated with, with a recent visit to the Memorial Art Gallery, which is really, really neat. We had some insight from our colleagues there that were just so impressed with our students and the way that they're able to analyze the artwork and understand how perspective is so, you know, woven with identity and understanding. And so that was truly a great highlight for us.
This next slide here just highlights the opportunities that we were able to provide three or four times this year with not only our teachers, but also our teaching assistants. And so they were working side by side with our teachers and our math intervention specialists doing, providing some professional learning around, again, math intervention, best practices, number talks. And this was something that we were able to utilize our resources through the University of Rochester and our coaches to make this happen.
So in terms of our data days, so we, we were fortunate, you know, in that we had some time built into the school day, you know, it's our locations this year. We really asked our teachers to, to dig deep into understanding, you know, this culture of looking at data and growth. Right? Well, relative to student growth and relative to their own instructional strategies in the classroom. And so we also, you know, we had a heavy focus on e-doctorships as well for the assessment piece. But we also just spent time talking about looking at student work and figuring out like where the students, you know, areas of growth could be. How can we redesign this learning experience to help them? So some of those conversations that I overheard those days were just so powerful, the oftentimes teachers don't have the chance to do. So I think it was a great opportunity for them to dig deep around, you know, spreading a culture of data. And then lastly, we, it was something that's, that's unique to Spencerport, and I think, you know, we invest a lot into our new teacher development with these core classes. And so, you know, we, Ms. Scott and I had the chance to teach two of them. And, you know, kind of look at how our staff, you know, what do they need? What are our newest staffers need? How can we better serve them and, you know, as well as the mentor program as well, like how we wrap our supports around our new staff? And I think that, you know, we can share some feedback that we will do at some point, you know, around the data from those courses. But one thing that was new this year that we split the literacy for all class into two cohorts. So we had an elementary cohort strongly led by our TOSSA coaches, and we led the secondary cohort. So we looked at literacy across the content areas and, and people appreciated it, kind of the differentiation there, that I think that was a positive as well.
Mr. Allen also was a facilitator of one of those core classes, and we also have some of our, our classroom teachers that are part of the program. I think what was also most impressive is despite the fact that we were challenged by some substitute coverage issues, we were able to still provide those opportunities throughout the school year, and we also did some strategic mapping of providing some of those core classes over the summer so that way our teachers can still have access to that because we, we happen to have a couple of very large cohorts, and so it was really challenging to have all of those, those teachers in the cohort at the same time. And again, we just wanted to highlight here with our team leader trainings that we had opportunities to bring in different partners. In this particular picture, we do have Mary Ann Maves again, who was working with the teacher leaders. Tomorrow, actually, we have our friends from Junior Achievement that will be coming back to talk to our fifth grade teachers relative to the work that we'll be doing at the fifth grade level. And again, we just wanted to highlight some of these, all of this hard work that these folks have been engaged in throughout the year. The last page highlights the professional learning mini week that we plan to offer June twenty twenty-one and twenty-two, and we have been doing a lot of planning around that in the past couple of days. So we have some really enriching opportunities for our teachers at the K five level and also at the six, twelve. So this right here really represents our K five level, particularly our classroom teachers. There will be unpacking of our E L A and math documents. So the new math document as well as the E L A document that's, that's been refined. We have another opportunity to do a three-hour training with University of Rochester around our number talks and build some of our resources that our teachers will actually be building on that day on Wednesday so that way they can use those next year as early as the beginning of the school year. And then finally, we will also spend a half a day talking about multi-tiered systems to support our S E L work, the S E L block that we've been engaged in this year and providing some opportunities for our teachers in terms of some teacher self-care with some of our folks that are very passionate about that and want to need some opportunities for, for staff there. At the secondary level, we have a very busy week as well. We have worked very closely with our partners through Bosie's, Rich Colosi and Ryan Mayer. Cory and I have been coordinating different e-doctorships opportunities for the teachers at the secondary level and providing them with time to work on assessments, common performance assessments, assessments as well as their priority standards. Any questions?
Wow. That's a lot. What I guess, yeah, question would be, I mean, this has obviously been a growing and evolving thing. Is there some like holy smoke thing you're doing next year or two, or are we just trying to get, get our hands around all the things that you've been working on and get them ingrained fully into the, the system, if you will?
Well, I think we're going to take the, the feedback from the staff, you know, which actually was really consistent with the work that we've been doing this year, you know, which is nice. You know, we know that staff appreciate when there's a depth of perspective and not as many topics, but really to narrow their focus. And so I think around assessment, around S E L and C R E and around literacy are, are kind of our big areas in there.
I'm just going to speak in there. And what I would also add that is that I just shared this actually with the M T S S coaches the other day. Our word for next year is intentionality. That we really want to think about what we're doing and where we're doing it and when we're doing it and trying to maximize the opportunities we have. I think we did a nice job this year trying to find those entry points with our, with the natural schedule of the school year. And as we look into next year and where we might be able to find those opportunities for professional growth, we need to just continue to be creative with how we provide our staff opportunities to be together, to be critical friends of one another and to be able to give each other feedback and, and have insight into the work that they're doing each day. That, that collective teacher efficacy is so very, very important. So really trying to, to highlight that.
Thank you both.
Just as a reminder, the actual plan that we'll have to file with the state will be coming to the board in the next morning. And then lastly, we'll transition to our policy review. We have a second read for a few policies and a first read for one policy. So Jonathan, I'll let you take it away.
Sure. So I'll start with the first read for the social media policy. I think we've all seen good and bad social media throughout the year. What we have are revisions to the social media policy after significant work by an internal team as well as reviewed by our attorneys at, at Fire Law Firm as well as B S K. We also have essentially some changes that have been incorporated from the B S K attorneys, really all about bringing forth discussion on social media tools, discussing a nexus that can form between employees posting and the district professional communication with students through social media, personal and personal versus professional social media use and some general policies about social media use. In, as these were being reviewed, we really had a couple of questions, two questions about the personal social media policy. And it first was, would the policy apply to staff posting student pictures on personal social media pages? And essentially the answer And essentially the answer is yes, it could. If a staff member holds themselves out and forms the nexus with the district as this policy provisions are warranted and engages in some sort of unprofessional behavior, then there could be a point where there needs to be a conversation with the supervisor or with HR. The changes in the policy were initially prompted due to some suggestive revisions from, from one of our attorneys from a prior law firm. These revisions would allow for a slightly stronger structure, which would allow stronger conversations that Jamie would be able to have with staff from an HR perspective. Another question really revolved around policy applying to staff posting pictures or comments maybe on another organization's page, moving outside of either the Spencerport or their own personal pages. And even in those circumstances, if a staff member is engaging again, the same standard, if the staff member is engaging in the unprofessional behavior and forms the nexus and holds themselves out as a Spencerport employee and somehow engages in either words or posting that, that goes down that line, then again, there could be a conversation with staff member through HR or with the supervisor based on what they're hosting even elsewhere. It could be in a situation, of course, case by case basis where there might be considerations for either First Amendment speech or if the speech is talking about terms and conditions of employment, then maybe there are other considerations at play. But they would be considered on a case by case basis based on the information that goes to the supervisor or to HR. Were there any additional questions about the social media policy?
No, I mean, you know, you and I exchanged the messages in terms of the policy itself. I did, just so the board knows, bring up the situation that may be procedural in nature in the sense that we have lots of staff who, in, this is not doing anything wrong. This is in trying to do something kind, take pictures at events of people's children, right? And post it on their personal pages for parents to then see. And just really recognizing like where that link could be, right? About how maybe if there's a family that maybe wouldn't want their kid's picture posted, the staff member wouldn't know that, right? By necessarily, and just making sure that that gets straightened out as we look at procedures. So not in terms of, you know, the policy being disciplinary in nature, actually in being protective of staff and student privacy as well. And so I think those are things that we'll have to look at once the policy unfolds. Cause I think there's a lot of, I think that's pretty common. You see a lot of pictures and events and it's all with the best of intentions. But just how does that play out in a time where things get forwarded or comments get put on that other people can't control as well? So.
And this, this policy was brought forth as a true first read and it's about getting feedback from the board, getting questions so that we can finalize our revisions and bring it back on the 20th as a, as a second read. All right. Also put forth for a second read, three policies that came before the board at the last meeting. Seventy-one thirty-two non-resident students, seventy-four eighty musical instruments and eighty-four sixty field trips and interscholastic trips. In the interim, there was only one change to the field trip policy and that was after Mr. Wood had a conversation with the auditors about structuring some payments regarding support for trips that are going to a national, regional or statewide competition. Other than that, it's the same policies that you saw in the last meeting when they were brought forth. Those are brought forth as a second, as a second read for you to take action and approve if you want to.
Are there any questions about the second read policies at all? All right. And we need to have a motion to accept those policies, please. Kate, second, please. Yeah. All in favor? Thank you, Jonathan.
Thank you very much.
All right. We're meeting evaluation. Everybody, all that's concerned, questions?
I make a motion that we enter executive session for the purpose of discussing the limited history of particular persons.
Second, Mike, all in favor?